Call me need order.
Commissioner Eastman?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Commissioner Wells?
Here.
Here. Please stand and join us in the opening prayer and pledge allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we seek your help with our affairs today. Bless this meeting with your divine intelligence and help us to make the best use of our own. We are divisive opinions here, yet we wish to reach agreement satisfactory to all. Please share your wisdom with us to help us do the right things by all concerns. Thank you for your heavenly blessing. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
I shall move we approve the agenda as printed.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and second to approve the agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Our motion carries. Okay, we have two proclamations this evening. It is. We will begin, uh, let's see, here we go. It is Community Planning Month, whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas and other places, and whereas community planning and plans can help to manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work, live and play, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be involved meaningfully in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the full benefit of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand support and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas the Amer- American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions that sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our settlements and environment, and whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to recognize publicly the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Arkansas City, and whereas tonight we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of the city of Arkansas City and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, I, Dan Yurkovich, Mayor of the city of Arkansas City, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Community Planning Month in Arkansas City in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month throughout the United States. Come on up here Josh, thank you for all you do.
I brought Scott here too.
Scott, yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna wanna do all, you're gonna work on this, so, well, here we go.
Alright, so. And it is Fire Prevention Week, and whereas the city of Arkansas City is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, our homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas four out of five of US fire deaths occur at home each year, and the fire death rate per 1,000 home fires was 10% higher in 2016 than in 1980, and whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, while heating equipment and smoking are the leading causes of home fire fatalities, and whereas working smoking alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas the Arkansas City Fire EMS Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas the city of Arkansas City residents are responsible to public, are responsive to public education measures and able to take personal steps to increase their safety from home fires especially in their homes, and whereas the 2018 Fire Prevention Week theme, look, listen, learn, be aware, fire can happen anywhere, serves to remind us about the basic but essential elements of effective planning. Now therefore, I, Mayor Dan Yurkovich, do proclaim October 7th through October 13th, 2018 as Fire Prevention Week in the city of Arkansas City, Kansas, and urge all citizens of Arkansas City to protect their homes and families by hitting the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Week 2018, and to support the many publics, public safety activities and efforts of the Arkansas City Fire EMS Department. Chief, thanks for all you do.
Yep. Next week we'll be hitting all the grade schools, so, uh, if you've got kids in there, grandkids are gonna be coming back to the house and they're gonna be questioning about fire safety in the house, so.
Smoke alarm in plan, right?
Exactly.
Chief, I got a question. Why is, why is it higher now than it was in 2000, 1980? I mean, what's, what's the difference? Looks like to me it'd be, ought to be lower now.
As far as fire deaths?
Yeah.
I think the big problem is it's, uh, current construction methods, uh, lightweight construction, also furnishings now, you know, new technology and with the plastics and, and, uh, that are in the home now, and, uh, electr- all the electronics burn really fast, and, and so you don't have the amount of time to get out of a house fire that you did 10 years ago.
Well, it kinda shocked me in this thing, it said 10% higher, you know, now than it was 1980, I just.
I remember one year, I think it was this week, you showed us a video of like a 1980's couch versus a present couch and the, the 80's one that was wool and leather or wood, didn't, it took a long time to ignite.
We had like 25 minutes till flashover and now it's less than seven minutes till flashover. So, it's a lot, lot more dangerous than there when the fire gets going, so, yep.
Is there a problem with overloaded circuits with the new electronics and stuff?
There definitely is, especially in older homes that aren't, uh, you know, built with the new modern codes and, and for electrical, so we do have a lot of that, and especially, uh, the pull on the, the energy for TVs, PlayStations and stuff. If you use a, you know, the, the small cheap extension cord, it's gonna heat up really quick.
What, what about the power strips? Do people depend on power strips to supplant enough, say, amp of a circuit?
We want them to use, we do want them to use a power strip with a circuit breaker in it versus just a regular old cheap extension cord.
Does that help a lot?
Yes.
Okay.
But you can also overload those too, so you just gotta watch and get, probably depending upon, you know, how much energy you're using on the equipment, then that's the type of, uh, search suppressor cord that you want to purchase. Very differently.
Yeah. Thanks for all you do, Chief.
Yeah, thanks, Steve, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have one visitor on the agenda, Brian Sanderholm, come on up and tell us your concern, it says, and I don't see that this is on the agenda about grass and streets.
That's all I got.
Okay.
Uh, I'm just a concerned citizen, uh, you guys have done a wonderful job on Main Street with what you repaved, I just would like to know when is it scheduled to go on, from Kansas City to Long Island?
I can tell you right now it's not. Uh, that money that we utilized for the, uh, repaving was with the sales tax, street sales tax, and that was the only way we could do it, and unfortunately we don't have the funds to do anymore.
Okay, well, I have an idea for you, semi-traffic that's in town, there are cattle trucks going up down Main Street and even up and down to 8th Street I've seen them on.
Yeah.
Maybe we can pull them over and give them a ticket and help pay for some stuff. I haven't seen them coming down Main Street tearing up where we're running.
Right, and we, and the problem is, is the way that the ordinance is written, local deliveries are exempt, so they can't be billed.
There's a cattle truck.
I, no, I understand that, but it's still a local delivery, right Chief, is Chief here?
Yes.
And so that is where we run into issues because they say, well, we're delivering locally within your community, and so therefore they are exempt from the law.
What about the tonnage on those roads?
Yeah, that's, that's my question.
Well, we don't weigh them.
No, but they have some kind of device that does.
We, we looked at purchasing one years ago, but it's a hassle because you have to have certified scales, you have to have them calibrated.
But do they have those on their books, how much their tonnage is?
And, and the tonnage rating is on streets such as 8th Street, uh, but on Summit Street there's nothing that's posted that has to, uh, the rating. Uh, the other thing we had a lot of trouble with, uh, getting any type of enforcement is that we found that most of them are following GPS and, but we don't believe that the road is properly, uh, signed and at any of the entrances, and, uh, I think if we had proper signage, and we've been working with KDOT for three years plus.
Right, and I, I received.
They're supposed to be making those changes.
Yeah, I received a message from KDOT on Thursday, um, they have a package that they're putting together with their engineering department for signage for the bypassing for trucks, because we've noticed, and I, I agree with you, I don't like seeing truck, you know, cattle trucks downtown, and it's gonna get worse unfortunately because you're gonna have new drivers, you're gonna have new trucks, um, new cattle companies bringing them in when they do their expansion, um, but, uh, we're trying to educate them, we're trying to ed- educate, uh, the citizens as well, but signage is a big key, and we've noticed like during Arcala when we put those, avoid downtown truck route, you know, go bypass, we don't have any trucks come downtown, I mean, they just avoid it, so we know it's, signage could probably take care of a large percentage of it. Problem is we have to get signage approved through KDOT because it's state highway, and we gotta make sure that they're okay with it and it matches what they consider to be uh, within their guidelines, so that's what we're waiting on.
I spend a lot of time driving around the town, of course, and I've been beside several, I've met them when their engine breaking uptown by the park.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Because they're coming into the stoplight, they're engine breaking.
Engine breaking.
That's a residential area.
Yeah, engine breaking's not allowed.
Can we, can we pull them over, give them a ticket and make them have to fight it?
We do, uh, what we did also find is, uh, not so much with the cattle trucks, but there's a lot of other truckers uh, that they're actually not the same truckers, so this is the first time through and it's always a different route, um, and so you're not making a big impact on enforcement, and that's why I, I actually had a trip to Dog City and saw how they have their truck route, uh, sign, and flashing lights, and they have very good compliance, and I think that's probably gonna be the most effective way. So we just need some signage.
Yeah, they're working on it.
Yeah, here's an idea. Uh, last but not least, I'm concerned about the Johnson grass and noxious weeds that are growing around the city limits. I thought we had a, a law against noxious weeds and Johnson grass growing in the city limits, can that not be curtailed?
Yeah, I mean, that's one, one of those items.
Specifically like Bulldog Boulevard.
Yeah, we have, we have quite a few cases, we have, we've had some cases on Johnson grass, haven't we? Yes, we've had a part few, and it keeps building because of the rain that we had in there, it just went out of control.
Yeah, that Bulldog Boulevard on the north side, I know Cybert does a really good prop, job on his property on the south side. We tried to spray our property, we sprayed it two or three times this year for Johnson grass and the levee, so we're trying to get ahead of it as well, but, um, there are quite a few other properties that definitely need to have Johnson grass taken care of.
I understand it's the personal, whoever owns the property.
That's correct, responsibility.
Responsibility, uh, you know, we're not just, if they can't take care of it, we take care of the woman, give them a bill, that's what I would expect the city.
Yeah, and we're actually, there's some of those issues that we're gonna be bringing up tonight, where we've actually went and billed people, so, but yes, we can do that.
Okay.
Thanks for the segue.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question on his comment about the, the streets, is, is there any way we can find out what the tonnage limit is on like 8th Street? Who, who, who can tell, is, can an agent?
It's actually posted on the sign, in fact, we actually.
That's five tons, I believe?
We actually got some recent signage down.
Well, it's gonna be a little more, but, uh.
Because we're starting to get so much.
Okay, 70,000, that'd be 80,000.
Yeah, they're 20 tons, 20, 40 tons.
But it's on the sign.
I think it's five tons, I believe.
I would really think if we just pulled a half a dozen of them over and the water'd get out the way truckers talk.
Well, the, the problem is they're new drivers.
And, and we've done that many times, and, uh, the problem is, some of them don't even wanna fight because they have to come back, and so they say, I'm out of town, can I just pay, pay this while I'm here, um, and they follow the GPS, they're not paying attention to the signs, and so I think if we can get some signs to get their attention, we'll be able to.
And we've, and we've contacted, I'll say, we, we've contacted Google and some of those other companies to let them know where the truck route is and where they can't be, and so they've made notes in their system, and we've been doing that for six, seven years, I think we've been, almost every year we.
Just can't make them do it.
Yeah, just can't make them drive. They can still go where they want.
They, they can cut off five or six miles going up 8th Street instead of going around.
Yeah, honestly, I, from all of our tests and all of our contacts, I don't think they have a clue that there's another way, they just are going right through.
Yeah.
Well, God forbid there become an accident on 8th Street.
Yeah.
Oh, bunch of cattle running around is worse, I'd like to see.
Yeah. If you're on bicycles on 8th Street too.
Yeah, that's true.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Next we have the consent agenda, so I need a motion to approve it or to pull something out.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
What is the, what's the personnel policy?
The policy had to do with employees that were to be heads of, head of the departments, and this is an update from Marla.
Yes, yes, it's just in, just in, okay, it was time to review the policy again, and so we just removed one potential exception to department head residency. The city manager has the ability to make exceptions based upon criteria that we have listed, not limited to, but based upon that criteria, and the one we eliminated was, uh, homeownership. We felt that, uh, having a home in the city limits would make someone perhaps more involved, more appreciative of the city as well as then they would pay the taxes in the city.
And rent an apartment outside.
Yeah, a few years ago, you said that it limited your pool to be able to force them to live in the city limits.
That was referring to employees in general, this is referring specifically to departments.
Do we have any department heads that live outside the city limits?
No. Not currently, all of them have.
Not at this time.
Apartments or homes in the city limit.
And then these four things are the only exceptions?
Not lim- it says, but not limited to, so it would be more the city manager's discretion, but I know that he has just recently
But the idea is, yeah, you, you live inside the city.
If you want to be department head, you need to live in the city, that's pretty much, unless you have some extreme case. You know, employees is different, but, but department heads, I really think they need to be living in the city limits.
I agree.
Well, we have a motion, but no second, and some discussion, alright? Any other discussion, anything else? Uh, any other questions? Alright, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Consent agenda carries. No old business, so new business.
Consider first reading of ordinance authorizing rezoning of 207 North Fifth Street from P Public Use District to R3 High Density Residential District.
Mayor, permission, this request comes from Habitat for Humanity. They recently had purchased the property from the school district. The way the public district works is you're supposed to be a public entity that owns it and it's supposed to be public use. Uh, basically the public use district is a little bit less stringent on certain things that happen, uh, in government owned places. So, obviously a house does not, is not publicly owned, it's not publicly used, it's privately owned, and so the request from them was to rezone it to R3 District. A planning commission did hold a public hearing back on September 11th and did vote to recommend, uh, this is the reason. We did talk a little bit about, um, the different layers of zoning like an R2 versus an R3. Um, the reason we've settled on R3 is because the area around it is already R3, and it kind of, it's kind of a more core dense part of the city as far as housing is concerned, so it just seems more appropriate than tackling on it.
Is this one, one lot, I mean, or how, how big an area is it?
Uh, I believe it's a hundred, it's a hundred foot wide lot.
Okay.
Since they've already poured the footing, it done a lot of work on it.
That's right across.
From the school.
There used to be a.
It's like a warehouse.
Garage, I should say, yeah.
I think they used it as community day school at one time too.
Yeah. So they're gonna build one home there?
Well, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to consider the first reading ordinance authorizes the rezoning of the 207 North Fifth Street from P Public Use District to R3 High Density Residential District.
Second.
So, R3 means that they could, even though they're gonna build one residential home, someone could come in and put apartments there or something to that effect?
Yes.
Which.
Technically, yes, that's true.
But it would have to be residential, so.
Yeah, there's several other things in that general neighborhood that are multiple occupancy houses.
Right.
Like large complexes.
Sure, yeah, but still, it'll make that corner look nicer, I think, so. Any other discussion, any questions? It is a roll call, though.
Commissioner Eastman?
Aye.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Wells?
Yes.
Mayor Yurkovich?
Yes. Alright, motion carries. Number two.
Special assessments, there's three different motions. Uh, first one is consider first reading of ordinance limiting special assessments of code enforcement activities unpaid weed mowing charges.
These three items really are ones that, um, we've already abated, uh, we went through the process, uh, to notify these individuals, uh, try to send them letters, um, contact them if we know of the individuals, correct? We try to contact every individual, whether, whether in, if they're in town, we contact them, if they've moved, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We got a lot of last address, public killing, killing address, and we sent a letter out, a certified letter, excuse me. We're gonna send a courtesy letter too on top of that, which we don't have to do, what we do anyways is courtesy, and, uh, love, they'll sign, and just don't do anything, some they don't even sign, and so we'll go ahead.
Can you come up, Mike? Mike?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, uh, what we do, we send one letter out first, and it's a certified letter, and if they sign that letter, they have ten days to respond, if not, then we can abate the property. Uh, in most cases, what we do is we'll send a courtesy letter on top of that, which gives them ten more days after they sign the letter, and after that, if they don't abate the property, if they don't take care of the property, then we go ahead and abate it ourselves.
Would you say a large percentage of these properties, um, are signed and returned or unsigned and returned?
I would say it's probably fifty, fifty.
Okay, so if they're signed, that means that someone in that area know, is aware of the situation.
Right, and if we have their phone number, we will give them, call them personally too on top of that.
Do we look at the utility bills to try to find individ- individuals as well?
Uh, no, we just go by the county, what the county has on it.
I remember one time we talked about that, uh, a couple of years ago, looking at utility billing to see if they happen to be at a different place in the community as well, so.
How many of these houses are vacant?
I'd say probably fifteen percent.
So these are non-vacant properties?
These are non-vacant properties, some, yes.
And a lot, and, and, uh, we, we also have, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
You know, we also have like the, if, if we can get them help, we try to get them help, you know, with the different groups, um, if they're, you know, disabled, if they're elderly and we know that they need assistance. Um, I also know like Brian's personally went out there, you know, or during work hour, hours, um, to help clean up properties. Citywide cleanup, we go out there and help with properties that we know of individuals that need assistance.
We'll be, uh, we'll be doing that this Saturday.
Yeah, we'll do it again this Saturday, so, you know, uh, we have, I can't remember how many records we have here of, of just weeds, but we probably send out 10 times that many letters, don't we, you know, roughly, a year? So these are just the individuals that, um, are the, are the ones that we just, um, could not come to some sort of arrangement with them, correct? And we have individuals that we accept payment plans from before we go this route, you know, so if they're on a payment plan, um, we do that, I mean, there's a lot of different approaches we take.
And there's a lot of them that just don't respond to us period at all, but, um, what, excuse me, compared to last year, I wanna say we probably have thirty percent more cases than what we did, but this is just new cases coming up. We still have the same ones that the years before that just doesn't take care of the property, and if we have thirty percent more, that's what added to that too.
So you're saying fifteen percent of these are vacant and the rest have people living there?
Yes, yes ma'am.
And they have utilities on?
Some of them do have utilities on, yes.
So we have people living in homes that don't have utilities on?
Some of them are without water and we notify them and tell them that they have to have the water turned on, and usually by the time it gets to that position, they move out.
Till the house is then vacant.
Yeah, the house is vacant at that time, and then we'll get ahold of the property and talk to them. We sent a letter to the tenant of the property, if it was a landlord bill, and also sent a letter to the landlord themselves, two of them. First one courtesy, and then, I mean, first one's a certified, the next one's a certified courtesy.
So both get, so the, the property owner gets one and his renter gets one?
Yeah, both of them do.
Are you finding that the property owners are responding?
Um, a lot of the times, uh, most property owners, they do respond back to us, and, uh, sometimes they go ahead and take care of it, and other times, they might be out of town, they just say, go ahead and do it, you know, we don't care.
The ones with, uh, over, say, $600, there's some that are 1,200, 2,000, have, that's just this year's?
Uh, that's just not this year, this, this is actually more than a year.
Okay.
This started in, uh, I think it ended July of last year.
Well, actually, we're playing catch-up, I believe that's, uh, two or three years, I think, on here, correct?
Well, this period is from July 1st of seventeen to August 30th, it's seven.
Okay.
So just July through August, okay.
Like I said, we, the, besides what our normal ones were for last year, of the year, uh, this year, we fly about thirty percent
more, that's just not taking care of the property.
And what are your options for collecting this?
Uh, we can do the special assessments and put them on the taxes, uh, we also let them know if they can get with the city manager and talk to him about a payment bill, and or if they can just pay it to, a lot of them just will respond.
Do you set off?
Yeah, I believe we, we did put all these to set off as well.
You do that from your department?
We haven't been?
No?
Okay, then we haven't been.
We've been working on a policy to present to the commission about it, so we've been talking about it, um.
Because, the way the state law's written right now, it stays with the property, correct? I think that's where our ordinance are, or.
Yes, um, currently, when, uh, the way it would happen is, um, if you adopt the ordinance tonight, it would be assessed to the property, so it would go on their property taxes, and when they get their property tax bill in December, that would be included, and they could pay half in December and then half in May, I think is when the second payment issue.
Yeah, June, yeah.
Then, um, under state law, if they don't pay their taxes within a year, then we can take additional action to collect such as submitting to set off, or we could file a lawsuit against them if we wanted.
So we have to wait a year after it's been assessed before we can file a lawsuit, or how long, okay?
Yes, um, we have to wait a year until after it's unpaid.
Okay.
So they, they're, have a year to pay their taxes before they face any other action.
Okay.
So this could get really out of hand, I mean, especially if two lots in Sleeth that owe $2,000, that's probably, that's, that's a lot for two lots in Sleeth, yeah.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of properties that, you know, that are like that too.
Well, sometimes it can get higher than what the property's worth, isn't it?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, 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 absolutely, they do.
Well, if we, if we do weed spraying and the bait weeds with, through spraying, this is gonna look pretty low, these numbers, cause the cost for spraying is gonna be really high.
They're all, that, that, yeah, they're, too, and sometimes goes off that same property, a lot of trash that we pick up, too, on the area.
Okay, well.
Are these just the owners, they're not the occupants?
These are the owners of the property, yes.
Okay. I was gonna say, I recognize a couple of these people that have moved out of town.
Yeah, we try the best that we can to get their Ellen address and send them everything.
So if somebody's already sold the property, then what happens?
They.
It still goes with the property.
Goes with.
Still stays with the property.
So the new owner is responsible for the.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, but we look, we, we do our best to, well, that's why you have to do these periodically to keep it updated on the, on the county records, so they're aware of it. And then we also, um, um, the title companies will call us and ask us, is there any potential outstanding, um, abagements or anything that needs to be remedied? They do a pretty good job of that.
Sure.
They keep in contact with everybody, though.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Are some of these, um, the descendants of owners that you know of?
Some of them are the, uh, children of the owners, and it's, a lot of them, you know, they inherit the property, they don't want it.
Okay. They don't want it, they don't, they just leave it set?
Here's one.
Back with luck.
Here's one.
Part of you don't want it.
Yeah, I see quite a few like that, too.
Well, I, I move we adopt the first reading of an ordinance levying special assessments for code enforcement activities for unpaid weed mowing charges.
Problem.
I second it.
And so any other discussion, I mean, so I guess basically this would just put it on their property tax if we approved.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I guess, how do we determine how much the charge is?
Uh, the city has a, a hourly charge for mowing, daily charge, and we have a contract with the vendor for a certain amount per hour.
The fee schedule. Some of these people have, some of these people have had a lot of hours of mowing, that's all I'm.
A lot of these, that, that, when, to give you an example, uh, the city statute says that if it's twelve inches or higher, it's a violation. We normally wait until it's around thirteen, fourteen, fifteen inches, just to make sure, and by the time you get the letters out, and you come back, and you give them the ten days, that fifteen inches can be, it can be in twenty-four inches, you know, the Johnson grass, it's just not a one mow, but it's two, three, yeah, it's a little, yes.
That's quite a, no, that's a chore, yeah, that is quite a chore, alright.
So, how, now how often does the city go out and mow those places that?
But whatever the property, when the vegetation is at twelve inches or higher.
Okay, so it could be every six weeks sometimes, or less, yeah, okay.
Depending on the rainfall, yes, sir.
Need a second?
I've got, we have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance, alright, any other questions or comments? Alright, seeing none, it is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dean?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Wells?
Yes.
Mary Kovich?
Yes. Two B.
Consider first reading of an ordinance levying special assessments for code enforcement activities unpaid refuse abatement and inoperable or abandoned vehicle charges.
Same situation, just different cases.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So in this case, it would be we, we have hauled off trash.
Cars.
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 Trash and cars, a lot of times on rentals, you know, people will move out, they throw what they don't want in the backyard or front yard, and of course, when we see that, we notify the property owner, because the tenant's not there anymore, and, uh, give them the ten day time to take care of it, and we go ahead and abate it.
Yeah, and we are getting in the, we are in the process of, we sent letters out to a lot of, um, abandoned vehicles and.
Yes, sir.
Just recently, so you may receive a call, because we're, we're getting pretty much close to the time limit on quite a few of those, correct?
We have a lot, yeah, we're gonna be.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of vehicles in town just sitting there.
There's a lot that's sitting around, but there, you gotta be careful, because you gotta make sure that the tag is out of date, we're not tied it on, and we do that.
Right.
Do you run them through, uh, see if they're stolen?
Well, I would put it out to the.
You don't?
Just see if they're stolen, don't have, all we do is see if it's, uh, up to date on the tag, title, and, you know, if they have enough to dig tag, that means they have insurance.
At the time they got the tag.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, that's normally.
Well, you know, a lot of these are dual, so out of your one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, seven of them are on the noxious weed list.
Yep. No, good.
So they've got a bill there and a bill here.
It's sad to say, a lot of times, the ones on trash and debris is the same ones that has the tall vegetation, too.
Well, we need a motion or a?
I, I so move that we consider the first reading of an ordinance levying special assessments for code enforcement activities for unpaid refuse abatement and inoperable or abandoned vehicle charges.
My second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all, it's a, no, it's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dean?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Wells?
Yes.
Mary Kovich?
Yes, two C.
Thank you.
Consider for a criminal or certificate of special assessment for dangerous structure demolitions.
Hey, Mike, just a quick question, were any of these emergency demolitions on this list?
I'm sorry, sir?
On this list, um, for demolished structures, were any of these emergency?
Uh, one was an emergency, yes, sir, uh, three twenty-four North Seven was an emergency by the, uh, foundation underneath the house, went to the basement, fell.
Yeah.
Completely collapsed underneath it, was about a ten to twelve foot area of the, uh, stem wall, that building, so the structure was very hazardous.
And it was, and it was very close proximity to the neighbor's structure, correct?
It's pretty away from the next one, maybe.
Okay, but the rest, I went through the process of the commission set forth declaring them dangerous enough it structures.
Were any of these brought up before us before?
All of them.
Were, okay, I, I was gonna say, I saw some names that were familiar, but I couldn't remember, okay.
Yeah.
Have no one, has no one made contact?
Uh, some of these people have made contact with us, and here again, they just don't wanna do anything, so the structure's getting such bad shape that we have to do something with them, because we have children around there playing, and, you know, the magnet for kids to get into. And the one that was emerg, they declared immediate danger, uh, that one did, there, I did talk to the lady, notified her to do the proper paperwork and everything, and, uh, did all the work it was supposed to.
Cause most of these, uh, properties got still those taxes on them, too?
Yeah, yeah, I, I guarantee.
Yeah. Well, that's, uh, will this be properties that eventually will go back in our land bank, where, you know, where.
We could potentially pur- purchase them back.
Where we can clean them up, where somebody can build on them or whatever.
Right. Yeah. We definitely could.
Well.
And again, almost everybody that's on that list is on the noxious weed list, yeah, now, the ones that are investment companies and financial places,
What's two or three?
They are gonna be locatable because they actually own that property, right?
Yes, and we do send letters to them, and, uh, there's a couple of the property owners there, they're, uh, uh, you know, companies like that.
Mm-hmm.
That, uh, they, we send them the letters, and they just do not respond back to them, they'll sign for them, but then they won't do anything about the building.
Well, as a dangerous structure, if the structure's gone, they have less reason to get ahold of us or to respond.
Right.
I mean, what, uh, what process?
Two oh three East Madison's gone, just two oh three East Madison's gone.
Ha.
Yeah, both of those are, yeah.
Right, but what's the process you go through when you're, I mean, I understand an individual, but what's the process you go through when it's in an investment company's name? You just send them a letter, same?
Yeah, we, we send them a letter and notify them that, uh, we're having the, the structure was dangerous, we send them the certified, that was that way, then we send them the certified letter about the commission meeting to declare the dangerous structure, do all the, uh, notification to them, uh, two fifteen North B Street, and then the one on Madison Avenue, two oh three East Madison are both on by, uh, finance.
The prob-
And what's, what's the option for us, Tamara, instead of us taking that on, if, an individual's different, but this is a financial institution that has that property in their name?
Well, but a lot of it, because they take it a loan out, it's that they owe that, uh, institution, and, isn't that right, Tamara?
Well. Or it's been reclaimed.
Right, it's, in this case, we're Springlee Financial now owns the property, that means they foreclosed on it and they took title to the property, so they are the legal owner.
Right. Yeah.
Um, but whether it's owned by an LLC, a mortgage company, or a person, it's the exact same procedure, we have to assess it to the property, and then if it's not paid in a year, then we can consider filing a lawsuit against them to recover, um, and maybe they think that we're, we're not willing to do that. So if there's no ramifications to not pay.
But.
Once the structure's. Yeah, once the structure's gone, though, the pressure's off of them, structure's gone.
Yes and no, they still have a maintenance responsibility as long as they're the legal owner, but that's the first ordinance assessing.
But how many peo- but how many those institutions in, in the years past actually paid for that, I mean, probably very few.
Actually, we've had, we've had some, um, financial institutions that will pay for dem- demolition of structures, if we, if we think it's a danger of, they'll pay for it and it never comes before the commission,
Okay.
Yeah.
because they just take care of it.
Hmm.
So, it, the, these are, everything you see are, is situations where they've pretty much tried everything they could.
Well.
I recognize these names from last year.
Even if it is a, um, a financial institution, they're still responsible for it, so.
So does. Right.
After that year, we can still take them to court and see.
Does. Does the letter come from your office or from the city attorney's office?
The letters that we sent to them, it comes from my office.
Mm-hmm. So I would think if it was a financial institution, a bank, that, you know, took the property back, it would have much more weight if it was from an attorney's office.
Yeah, I can see it, but still, we still have to do it anyway, because it's still.
I understand, I understand.
But with our ordinance law, we have, we have to do, go through his office, don't we, Tamara, first?
Well, state.
Well, here, but here's the other thing, too, I, I wanna avoid the perception that we're, we're so happy and using our attorney first, you know, kind of, I don't want it to be seen, and we've all heard the conversation in regards like debt collection and so on and so forth, and we've seen all the posts, I just don't want it to be treated like that, I want it to be from his office first and foremost.
Right.
Try to go everything, but then at that point, maybe we can add additional step, or then we turn it over to Tamara and then she notifies him, um.
We've got twenty thousand dollars, almost twenty-two thousand, between an investment company and a financial company that didn't pay, property's demolished,
Mm-hmm.
and we're kinda waiting to see if we can get that back.
They also, they loaned someone money to buy a property, and then it got dilapidated, so in their mind, they may be happy to have it demolished and pay that much instead of being stuck with something that's even getting worse, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe them.
Yeah, I don't know, okay, thank you.
We'll never get any out of, an invi- individual.
I, um, make a motion, we approve certificate of special assessment for dangerous structure demolition.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second to approve this certifi- certificate of special assessment, uh, any other questions or discussion from the commission? This one's a voice vote, so all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, same side, and motion carries.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Mike, I need to talk to you about my mother's neighbors. She's, she's got a Mexican farm, it's too.
Uh, city manager updates.
Okay, national night out, neighborhood block parties are going on right now, chief, uh, has a list of the properties, um, fall cleanup day, the, the cleanup day for the community cleanup day is actually Saturday, um, depending on weather, looks like it's probably gonna be rained out like it was last time, unfortunately. Uh, but then it's also co- coincides with their trash day, so follow the regulations of the billing that you got, and we'll get that all picked up for you. Uh, s- employee appreciation breakfast is gonna be October twelfth, I believe we start at six, okay, six o'clock in the morning at Northwest Community Center, so be there.
I'll be there.
Um, if you can, uh, traffic safety committee meets this Friday at ten, I believe, next Friday at ten, twelve, next Friday at twelve, sorry, next Friday at twelve. And, um, only other item I have that's not on the list, I met with the tenants association today, we're working on drafting an agreement, um, moving forward and.
It's me.
So I'll have that for you for the next meeting and have that here as well, so, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, if you get a chance, check out the recycling trailer, that was the one that we got off the grant, uh, from the state of Kansas, and that's the one that, that'll be the one located at the middle school.
That's nice.
I love the, I love the paint job in the, in the, on it, in the bulldog deal, that's, that's pretty neat.
Yeah.
Where was that one gonna go?
Middle school parking lot.
Well, if everything holds true, it'll relieve the others who we have.
See, it's ten noon Friday.
Well, I make a motion for adjournment, so we go to the parties.
Second. We have a motion and a second for adjournment, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, same side, we are adjourned. Right.